Go. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm Chair of the Board of Directors of the D.C. Housing Authority Stabilization and Reform Board, and I call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this afternoon. This is our regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the D.C. Housing Authority being held today, May 10, 2023. This meeting is being held at Ebex video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is 1:02 PM. If you're not speaking, please ensure to place your devices on mute. Thank you. As we do at the beginning at every meeting, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Today's agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to our Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent inputs on matters of public concern and offers you the opportunity today to express your views regarding decisions by DCHA's management and this board during the public testimony portion of every meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meeting abide by certain rules of decor to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use chat to comment when it is not your time to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud threatening or abusive language during the meetings. This includes loud outbursts shouting during times when you are not invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from this virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. We appreciate your interest in the matters before us today, and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call to determine if we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Dickerson?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
That.
Thank you. Commissioner Burbidge?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Silla?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay? Chairman Skinner?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have nine commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would like for commissioners to consider the minutes of the April 12, 2023, board meeting and the open set portion of the May 3 special board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Commissioner Lee, second.
Second. It's been moved in second, so let the minutes stand approved as presented. The next on the agenda is the Executive Director's report, but before we do that, I want to make a couple of comments. So as you probably know, the Starboard legislation requires the board to have four listening sessions, one in each quadrant of the city. So last Thursday, we had the third of the four listening sessions at Potomac Garden, and we had a really good turnout and a robust discussion. But what we heard was really consistent with the previous meetings. Residents are concerned about a number of issues from security and safety to pest control, maintenance, and the quality of the maintenance, and even the concern about the sensitivity of the DHCD staff. They want to make sure that residents are treated with respect. So I want you to know that we heard you, the board has heard you, and we are, you know, really dedicated, and I want to assure you that we are committed to improving things as quickly as possible. As you know, we are undertaking an inspection of every unit and following up quickly with making repairs. Of course, it's going to take some time to get through our entire portfolio, but we do have some momentum going. And again, the board is committed to making sure we continue this momentum as we move forward. And Director Donald is going to talk a little about the process of upgrading the units in her report. So the next listening session is scheduled for next Thursday, May the 18th, and it's going to be at the King Greenleaf Recreation Center in Southwest. So we announced last week that we had launched a process to find a new executive director once Director Donald steps down. The first step is to retain an executive search firm to undertake literally a national search and try to come up with a world-class director that we can count on moving forward. So we are close to finalizing an agreement with a firm, and we should be able to announce the selected search firm in the next few days. So once the firm is selected, that's really just the beginning of the process. The firm will be reaching out and trying to find acceptable candidates. They will go through a vetting process, and then we have interviews. And again, I want to assure the public that we will have a time for stakeholder and particularly resident input as we go through that process. So again, we will keep you up to date on the timing of how and when the stakeholder input will take place as we go through the search process. So at this time, I'm going to call on Director Donald, who's going to give us an update on several issues with the department.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, commissioners and staff and members of the public. So I'm providing our update today. If we go to the next slide, please, on a number of items that are of interest to everyone, I believe, and the update on our HUD response, occupancy, news about federal vouchers, only once, not twice, and update on reasonableness and status of our urgent needs campaign, as well as a property beautification, but beautification in their name, although Jim Dickerson may be blessing us for all of the wonderful things that we're doing. And then an update on, as the chair said, on the listening sessions. So, next slide. Now, in terms of the HUD response, and I just want to remind everybody where we are with this. We have until May 30th to cure the findings listed in the HUD report, and there are total findings, observations, and recommendations. So there are a total of 103, so that's, we count from the total number. Where we are now, we have satisfied 27. We have another 33 that we believe we have satisfied, and the process is we submit to HUD. This is an iterative process. A lot of people thought, oh, at the end of May, you're going to give them a report and they're going to respond. It's an iterative process. So when we satisfy a finding based on our response to their corrective action requirements, we submit it, and then HUD clears it, or they come back to us and say, no, we need a little bit more. And that's the process we've been undergoing for the last several months. So we now have 33 items that we have given to them that we believe we have satisfied, and we're asking for closure. We have a meeting on Thursday, and we'll hear back from them between now and then, and then we'll have some discussion. We have 43 in progress, and I want to give some context to that. So it seems like a big number, and are we going to really get there by the end of May? We will be so substantially there by the end of May. So thanks to our team. I was praised Jenna Sebastian for her leadership and drive on this, but everyone on the team, our consultants. A number of findings will not be closed until the final element that is required, which is training. So many of these are about training. So the board passed the ACOP, which has a number of findings, and the requirement is that we, the board passed a resolution that we develop procedures, which we have done with our consultants, and that we do the training. Trainings for everything are on schedule on the calendar for this month of May. So we have satisfied all but in many, many of the remaining findings, but training, and we'll be able to check those off, and hopefully HUD will give us that, the response. There are a few other things, as I've said repeatedly. It's a real small number, but that are just not going to be implemented or concluded. Now, YARDI is one. It's the easiest one for people to grasp. It's updates to our YARDI system, and it just can't happen within a short period of time. We still have some other things to negotiate with HUD in terms of some of the findings relating to HUD dissection, that we need to make repayments, and that's a negotiation. So we're in really, really great shape.
Director, for the benefit of the public, would you explain what YARDI is?
Sure. Sorry. YARDI is our system of record, our information system of record. That is the agency's main database.
Just a question, and I really appreciate that context setting, because I think sometimes media misses that, and they just think, oh, there's a deadline, and it'll be met, and it's either good or bad. And I really appreciate you helping us all understand that it's a more complicated process, that it's clearly a back and forth and iterative. Has HUD given you any sense of when they would potentially say, I mean, is it end of calendar year? Is that, I mean, it's clearly not May 34, let's be clear, right? But what is it?
Yes. We have asked them to, we want a letter response, or some type of acknowledgement, and talked to them about that at our last meeting, and they have indicated that that would come fairly shortly. My interpretation was within 30 days, even though they didn't say it specifically, because it has to go up their chain, a multiple chains. But Marilyn O'Sullivan, who was the lead person on the review, has been keeping her leadership informed and, you know, providing this information. What we're going to do is, at the end of May, we will take stock ourselves, and we will communicate where we are. I know that will be not official until HUD, but we can say, we know they've cleared this many findings, and here's where we are in the others. And so we're working on communications that we'll be able to say, here's where we are, and then HUD can, and it won't be disputable, because it'll be only findings that they have, they've cleared, and we'll give context for some others.
And HUD is then reviewing this, and they will get back to us on their own timeline. We will not control.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Okay. So over the next couple of weeks, we, again, are focusing on completing all of the trainings that are required, and then coming to some agreement, hopefully, on the findings where there are some repayment demands. I think we're going to be in good shape, but be pretty much sure to say where we are on everything, and I will certainly be informing the board and putting that together in a comprehensive memo so that everyone is aware. Okay. Next one. All right. I'm really excited to tell you where we are in terms of occupancy.
Before we leave this, can I just, I mean, I don't want us to sort of move so quickly and not appreciate and acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that you guys have done to get here. So, I mean, I know we got to, but I just, it's incredible how much work you guys have done on the timeline you've done.
Yeah, thank you. I really do appreciate that. I said to someone the other day that the HUD findings go back four and five years, but we've been asked to cure them in six months, and we're pretty close. So it's remarkable, and again, all-out effort, at the same time as doing everything else. And so that was something that I felt really important, that we can't just focus on the HUD report and not do our day-to-day jobs, and that's why everyone is exhausted. But you'll see, but we knew we had to. And so, so when we go to the next one, occupancy, but this is the standard dashboard that we've been using that shows the total number of units that we have in our portfolio. We call them ACC units. Those are public housing units. How many are occupied? How many are vacant? We have to below the 2,000 number. We have some that are, in the left-hand box, it says 196 units moving to mod status, and that's basically what HUD allows us to take the units offline for longer-term renovations, and they don't count against our occupancy. And I want to talk about occupancy. So in, just for the month of April, this is the April dashboard, that we had 80 new, we call them admissions, new people moving in off the waitlist, and we also had people we have transferred across our portfolio. I want to go to the next slide, though, to really show you the big story, and that doesn't get reported, and we will be reporting this or communicating this on social media and in some other way. So new admissions are lease-ups, or these are people coming in off of the waitlist. And you look at fiscal year 2019, which is obviously before COVID, and there were a total of 69. Then, obviously, during the COVID years, quite a smaller number, but also there were some agency practices and policies then that didn't focus on the waitlist. We are now, just in this fiscal year, which is since October, 231 new people have moved in off the waitlist. I mean, it's really remarkable, and we're continuing to build. So we made a projection this year that we would have 600 new admissions, and I told the team that was at least 50 a month. We're going to hit that. And so they have built the muscle, or the staff muscle, to do this, and we have generated a lot of interest, and I think people are interested in our public housing. Commissioner Silla?
Earlier, when you said we are keeping the trains running, you are doing a disservice to you and your team. You were not adequately, it was a significant understatement.
Thank you.
You are obviously way more than just running the trains. So just, I want to express a lot of gratitude, and then also recommend that we share this as an update with, you know, the Interagency Council on Homelessness, our committee meeting, so that people can see that this is the work that our housing authority is doing.
Happy to do that.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Lee. So Director Donald, is this linked to the series of open houses?
Yep. I'm going to show you the next couple of slides. This is what has driven that this process, or driven these results. So in this slide, these are the eligibility events, and we shifted strategy mid-year because we were not getting enough response from outreach to our waitlist. And I remember I've talked about, well, we would send a notice to 100 people, and 20 showed up, then we would send it. And so we looked at that and said, okay, we're getting only a small response, so we've got to cast the net wider. And as you say, that, first of all, I think the bottom-line story is that we have done multiple outreaches, and we have invited everyone who was on the public housing waitlist, that's 22,112 people across the months, the number who have attended the events you see, and we did have an amazing turnout last week, a little overwhelming, but over 1,200 people, and people have heard now that we're moving to close this waitlist and get as many people housed so that we can be open. Then the next row shows how many have been deemed eligible, and that's a large number. So just, deeming eligible means that they've had to come back and basically get recertified, and really show that they still meet the income requirements, that we check the family size and some other requirements. So we have over 1,600 people now who have been deemed eligible, and a smaller number, so a much smaller number, who are no longer eligible, and then we still have some in the queue pending eligibility. So we're at a point where, in just sheer number, we're close to having the number of people who could fill our units. Obviously, it's not a one-for-one match, right? So it's bedroom size, it's geographic location, and all of that. But Ms. Heath and Ms. Brett, so they're the ones that I really want to bow down to in terms of managing this whole process, have, you know, they have their experience from other public housing agencies. You always want to have more people eligible, kind of like in a technical drawer, so that we're constantly, you know, able to quickly reach out, and when someone moves out, and then refill. So this is.
So Director Donald, so we have, what is this, 1,600 or so people eligible? As of today, how many units are available for folks to move?
Okay. I love how you're taking me to the next one. Okay. So let's go, I'll get there in a couple of slides. One, I also wanted to point out that we're doing better in terms, and previously, the focus had been on only transferring within our properties. So as you know, that doesn't increase occupancy, because then you vacate another unit, and we're still, you know, a net positive significantly for this year. But now our focus has been on addressing the needs of people who do need to move, to find a unit that meets their needs, or improve the conditions, or for other reasons. But we're trending towards significantly more new admissions, which is what will drive occupancy. Okay. So we'll go to the next slide, then. So here's where we are in terms of our vacant units and updating our units. And I think this is also remarkable, and I want to thank the OCP team under Brian Butler's leadership. We have actually, since October 2021, we have turned 731 units. I mean, that means completely renovating units that have been vacant for a long time, and they're doing it at a pace now, if I think of, about 40 a month. And so we have, we're on target now to hit 1,200 for this year, so that I have. So all of the units that are vacant, Mr. Chairman, not all of them are uninhabitable. I just want to be clear. Sometimes one moves out, you can come in, paint and patch, maybe replace some appliances, and they're ready. But then we had others that have been vacant for years and years and years, or, and it rained, and lots of, but, you know, conditions, the property deteriorated. Now, again, with that muscle, it's like we're going in, we're turning quickly, we're identifying those units that need to be renovated. So the, I don't have the exact number of what we have available in the entire portfolio, because we had to, we have some reconciliation to do between the OCP team and the PMO team, because they're moving so fast. And so when OCP turns a unit, they basically do it by property, and they give notification to the property manager. Then we've got to get it in our system, and that's, I keep pushing, our system is our system of record. So if it's not in YARDI, it doesn't count. And that's how we've got to really drive the data. But so, that's a follow-up update on exactly how many units are available. But again, keep progressing.
So Director, are these supposed to be the same unit?
Yes, that's exact. No, that's not the same unit, because the window is different. We didn't change the window. I don't know why we showed that, but that's what, sorry.
To them to know.
Yes. Yes. Good catch.
The same question, right?
Good catch. We were trying to throw some pictures into the last minute. I'm like, can we have some pictures? But, yeah, all right. And when you all go out on the properties too, I invite you to ask the property managers to show you vacant units. I know the chairman has seen that a couple of books have been out to show you. They do really good work, and we're doing better at getting inspections and meeting the respective entity. So not the same unit, but a sample. Okay. So then I want to close on the occupancy with where we are with the whole waitlist. You saw the large number of people who are still pending eligibility from our current waitlist. Clearly, we have to exhaust all of those first before we can reopen, because it's not magically say everyone was eligible, and they picked units, and we don't have any vacancies. And so we need to see where we are before we can open this new site-based waiting list. And there's some other things that have to happen as well internally with some training and making sure our systems are updated. So our plans are to do that sometime this summer. And there will be, you know, a lot of communications about that to individuals through partner organizations, a lot of, you know, external media that will be pushing out to talk about how you sign up for the new waitlist. Okay? Just keep that on our radar screen. Now to focus on what we call the Urgent Needs Campaign, but it's really, I call it improving the quality of life for people who are living in our properties. As you know, we started in January with doing inspections. So this is the one where we're inspecting every single unit. Again, an amazing amount of work has been done since January. We're on target to have all of our units inspected by the end of June. And let me show you where we are. When we go to the next slide, this shows the, next slide, please, the properties that we have already inspected, and out of the total, oops, we have inspected 78%, no, that's not correct. I'm sorry. I think there were about 5,000 units, I have the total, anyway. But we have inspected 2,400 units since January. Again, this is, HUD dinged us for not inspecting them annually, and now we're going to have every single one in our system of record to document. And some of what we're finding, the same things that you all are hearing in the listening sessions, that property conditions, we've got pest control issues. So they're categorized in any unit that immediately after inspection, even though it's very detailed, but kind of the summary is if someone's requiring pest control, if they need emergency repairs, and if they need longer-term repairs, and whether or not people need to be relocated. So far, we're finding most repairs can be done with either short time, someone moves out to a hotel for a week or so, or can be done in place. And so we're trying to not be so disruptive.
These are inspections of units that are occupied?
They're both.
They're both.
So on every, they're going at every property, every build, every unit and every property.
Good.
Commissioner Silla, is this going to help us also understand, and will it inform our strategies for properties? Earlier, we had talked about, like, which properties potentially need redevelopment, which properties need might need to be redeveloped entirely, right? And so I'm assuming this data is also like new information that can help us.
Does, it helps and the team will be presenting to the Capital Projects Committee, kind of the plans for looking at the whole portfolio. And then to the whole board after that. And they have a whole decision tree that takes data from the inspections, from complaints, from, from other sources to compile that to really have a picture of a property.
And I think one of the things we, in talking to the, to John and others on the team that are working on Capital Projects is they have been looking at a redevelopment plan that they inherited from the prior board that even the prior board didn't actually even adopt formally. So it's sort of like, how are we supposed to be thinking about this? And, and the new team is looking at it and saying, we need to rethink this. And I think they're going to be coming to us with a revised recommendation for how to approach this. And I want, it's not just capital projects. I mean, we know that many of the other committees are, have critical roles. So we need, we want to be thoughtful in how we roll this out to the entire commission and then we'll bring it and have a conversation about how to proceed. So I think we all agree that what, what we've inherited, all of us kind of collectively have inherited is, is not what we need.
Thank you. And I just want to make one other point. If you look to the, the last couple of columns, or at least the one that says repairs in progress, you don't see a lot. And let me tell you why. We started this in January with our own staff. As the board approved these significant contracts that piggyback from the DGS contracts. And the process to get approval for those contracts that had to go through city council, and I am making a statement here, has taken a while, even a normal process, which means that from the time the board approved those contracts in January, where normally we could sign off and move forward right away, there's a delay. And so those contracts were, have just been approved and now we're, you know, signing off and going to be issuing task orders. Just want to make that point that any additional process is going to be a delay. And, and here's where we are. So the good news is we do have the contracts approved. They're signed and task orders and we're going to be having, you know, robust teams going out and doing the repairs, but our ability to be nimble is going to impact it.
So Director Donald, can you actually clarify that so that everybody clearly understands? The board approved these contracts in January 2023.
Yes.
Correct. And they went and they've been approved or they just recently got approved. So they were with council?
Yes, they go through a period of review with the council. Some are what's called passive review and there are a number of days that have to pass before they're deemed approved. And I think that is 45 days. That's if they're not, it's not controversial.
But they can choose to affirmatively approve them. I guess my concern is that we documented, maybe you thought of this, but I wonder if we should do something like sending a council of the list of the procurements that we're working on that I guess I am concerned that the council is doing, has done something, taken a step towards doing something that is going to slow us down and make it harder for us to serve our residents. And I want the council to know if that's what they want to do, they need to understand the consequences.
Okay.
And they cannot come back to us and say, why are you taking so long when the reason we're taking so long? And we, they should not be waiting for deemed approved because they don't have to be passively. They can affirmatively approve those on an emergency basis. So we need more partnership from the council and I worry that they take steps sometimes that they don't understand the consequences of their action and it impacts our residents and I find that very upsetting.
Agreed. And so we can document that in a, in a more concrete way to say, this was the timeframe. Now, in all fairness, the, these contracts are funded by district dollars and so we would have had to do it. So the, the new emergency legislation would not have made, you know, these would have been required to go to council anyway. However, we, and we can quantify this for you. We have a number, multiple, multiple other contracts that are paid for with federal funds. And some of them are even, you know, administrative contracts that you got to still do the work. And we have to sit back and wait. And if we're not able to move forward, it's, it's going to slow down and of course it's going to require more, more staff that we didn't get.
Commissioner. Which committee in the council does this go before? Housing or?
Yes. Well, and eventually it goes through the housing committee, but then to the whole council, all contracts.
This is part of the budget process. So it's in, I guess.
It's in the budget process. It's not like they are approving.
No, 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 this is, this is not.
Oh, they're separate.
Right.
Separate. It's case by case, kind of.
I wonder if we should get a commitment from the housing committee to take these up as an emergency.
I, you know, I really appreciate that suggestion and that we're saying concretely, this is how long it takes. That doesn't work in our situation because we're trying to turn things around. So.
Yep. And especially when we have, you know, the requirements, we have a board. And I can keep trying to encourage the, they be clear about the roles of the board versus the roles of council in terms of oversight. As an agency director, a district agency, I didn't have a board. I had a million dollar authority as a director. And then anything over a million dollars went to the council. We knew that whole process. We teed up everything. Here, the board has authority over $250,000. So you're already you're scrutinizing lower level contracts that are coming to a board that has been appointed by the mayor that has the legal authority to do that. And now there's an extra layer, even with federal dollars. So, but we now have the contract signed and we'll be going forward with the repairs.
Commissioner Burbridge.
What is the justification for doing this process? Is it because we have ran into problems with the contractors not fulfilling their obligation? How does the councilmen or what are they saying why they have this, this? I don't know. Should I say necessary or unnecessary step in place?
I would, I would argue that it is perhaps well-intentioned, but a misguided approach to helping us reform. And I don't think the council understands that this is not helping us.
Yes, and I, I think they also have what, what oversight means. Their responsibility is oversight. And it's, so I think there's confusion about what oversight actually means. Does it mean micromanaging? Does it mean being, doing the board's functioning? Does it mean what?
Yeah.
And I think that's the clarification that we should be pushing for with the council and the mayor, et cetera.
This is, this is.
We're moving. We're here to do a job. We're not here to, you know, get elected to something. So.
This is Commissioner Skinner. So I want to thank my fellow board members chiming in on this issue. I have, I have had direct conversations with the housing committee chair on this issue. And I think ultimately it boils down to what Commissioner Dixon just said. What, what is oversight and what, what does that mean? And he and I have had going back and forth on that issue. And again, I think as, as one of the commissioners said, I think it's well-intentioned, but I think it's really that the council may not understand that the consequences of some of their actions. So we will continue to push on this issue. And I would urge my fellow commissioners, if you have relationships with, with folks on the city council, on the DC council, that, you know, make those connections and let them know that this could in fact, you know, really delay our ability to, to move forward and do some of these improvements that we're talking about.
So there will be an opportunity, perhaps this is emergency legislation. And so emergency legislation has a period of time that expires. And so there may be time for that education to occur before it's moved into
We'll have a hearing presumably and we'd have an opportunity to test.
And Commissioner Silla, and also time to build trust. I mean, we've, I think we've been successful in demonstrating not, not just competence, but like efficiency. And I think socializing these incredible outcomes will, will also support all of our efforts to
Educate.
Yes.
Including making sure the council gets this report so they can see the progress that Absolutely.
Staff is watching. Okay, I'll go through the next couple of slides. So I came up with an idea, kind of a theory that some people were not interested. People coming off the waitlist were declining our properties because of the way the properties look. So with those days, a lot about curb appeal, but it's also improving the quality of life for people who live there. And while some of the development projects are going to take a long time, we can still focus on improving the look and the feel and quality of what our properties look like. So I carved out some, some money and sent the OCP team on to develop a plan to do major, what we're calling kind of a project, property refresh that would include landscape maintenance, planting beds, mowing, trimming, and also we will have contracts to do ongoing maintenance that will relieve property management of some of the day-to-day that they can focus on some of the properties that the larger campuses and family properties. So Commissioner Burbidge and Commissioner Blackson will be able to make sure that the grass is getting cut, you know, in real time. And so this will augment our, our team. So I'm, I'm very excited. All of this is, I told them I wanted it to happen this spring and it's happening. So you all can get around. So we do have contracts that we were able to pull from our existing contractors and rescope them. And we have 28 properties where we're going to be doing a major refresh. We're also going to be refreshing lobbies of the senior buildings and just trying to make the common areas more inviting. So.
So Commissioner Skinner, again, Director Donald, so at one of the listening sessions, I believe I heard that there are some resident businesses, section three businesses that do landscaping. Have we been able to connect with them at all or what, what is our outreach to, to resident businesses that do landscaping?
I can follow up on that in, with our section three team to find out who we are contacting with and what's, what is available. I think this landscaping is of a scale that you, you know, you need larger, you know, full-service operations. But the day-to-day stuff, even I have recommended that we look at some of our summer youth programs. Also, I want to say that we, we're going to be installing air conditioning units at 20 of our properties. These are basically portable air conditioning units. Just came up at the Langston, Ferris planning session and we jumped on it right away. And so we do have, the teams are going out now over the next few weeks. And to make sure that we've got air conditioning for those who don't have. Okay, I'm finishing up rent reasonableness. I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with that. We will have our vendor selected this month. This is the vendor that will do the rent reasonableness tool that allows us to compare units and unit amenities and age, you know, unit by unit as HUD requires. And we still need HUD's final approval on the plan, which we expect to get. But the way we're going to implement this is our, I recommend our plan is to hold harmless all existing tenants. So we have tenants who are currently living in properties and to keep that rent at what it is so that we don't disrupt anybody's life. And that when people get new contracts and when people move, we will start doing the rent reasonableness and our goal is to do that starting July 1. We have heard a lot from landlords about having, not having gotten any rent increases in the past three years now. They will be able to apply for rent increases, but the rent increase will be against the rent reasonableness tool. If the rent reasonable tool says we're paying you too much, then their rent will be lowered. So it's going to be a little bit of a risk, but we do know that there are a number of properties that we are underpaying. And we think that from a fiscal standpoint, we're going to be able to absorb that there's going to be adjustment up and adjustment down. So this is not going to be a huge, huge impact. And we will also limit the, the rent increases to the same rate that the city allows plus COLA, which I think is no more than 10%. But you all will hear more about that when that's ready to roll out because we have to do a lot of communications in meeting with stakeholders.
Could I ask a quick question about the financial impact? So obviously there's this issue with HUD and the repayment. So I know HUD has questions about, you know, whether they're willing to. If we hold at the higher rate and, you know, HUD is only, so we know we'll have to eat that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and we figure that into our finances. Thank you.
Commissioner Burbidge, for the residents and the public that's listening, with the rent reasonableness, it will not affect what they are currently paying, just for clarity.
Yes, you want to make sure we're holding them harmless and, yep.
Commissioner Silla, I just, I want to reflect like, just knowing from the backend, all of the work that you did to get us to a point that, you know, remembering that you vetted all the contracts, that you had to figure out like what rent you were paying on units and that you did all of that quality control to get us to a point now that we are able to pull together this rent reasonableness policy and tool is also quite an accomplishment. So I just wanted to recognize like that you were giving us updates on things that you've been working on since you got here.
Thank you. And it's really complicated. And so we, the headlines, and I'm trying to explain to the board and I really appreciate, you know, your, your feedback and your appreciation for that, that this has taken a lot longer, but it's a very layered process and we had to get it right. We had to be able to defend it and we also had to be able to afford it. So I think we've landed in, in a good place. More good news on the next slide. We will be administering about 1,000 new federal vouchers this year. Which is amazing, amazing. And this is the first time, other than the, the vouchers that we got through from COVID, the emergency housing vouchers, that we have a substantial ton of new federal vouchers. And this is a result, I give props to our, our CFO for really drilling down to determine how much we have available in HUD reserves and our consultant, Dorian Jenkins, has been a guru on this, really helped us figure out how we are able to allocate those and still meet our other needs so that this is, this is not a new burden on us, but it's something that we can, we'll be able to afford. So in order to get these vouchers out, we did contract with NAMAK to do the eligibility because we knew that we just couldn't layer that on everything else that we're doing. So they are already starting that process and our commitment is to get these vouchers allocated by the end of this year. This will also help satisfy one of the big corrective action items on our MTW plan, which is not meeting the, it's called substantially the same. And both the occupancy and the new vouchers will, will help us to increase the number of people we're serving. That will be, when, when the agency gets there, won't, won't be there overnight, but maybe in another year. That's going to be a huge win too, because that's when years that we haven't been able to keep up. Commissioner.
In your opinion, you know, the voucher program has also had challenges. And how, you know, on a positive level, addressing it, which, what, what do you see as changing in the way the voucher program has been previously run and what you're trying to institute now?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that's still a work in progress. We are making some changes in the, the business processing at HCBP, working with the lab at DC to kind of streamline some of the applications, the department. But we're also looking at how we manage staff and that's still a work in progress, which is why we had to augment our team with NAMAK, but we're hoping by the end of this year that they'll be operating in a more efficient manner and that can keep up with the. Okay, I know I'm taking way too long, but I really appreciate an opportunity to explain and, oh, thank you. And thanks for all the questions. Finally, I will go to the listening sessions that our chairman has already talked about. So I'm not going to repeat what he has said, other than we remind everyone that we do have the listening session next Thursday for our Southwest properties, which is, which are a small number of properties, but very mighty. And that will be our final of these format listening sessions. We have had, I think the next slide will show you, you know, decent turnout. Always hard to predict how many people are going to show up. But I think thanks to Commissioner Burbidge and Commissioner Blackson for their outreach and that even though the numbers may be relatively small, I think the representation is very strong for the leaders who have shown up in representing their properties and our resident council as well. And Chairman Skinner already talked about the last slide. And Chairman Skinner already talked about the last slide of the, um, the major themes that, uh, public safety is a major theme, um, maintenance, routine maintenance, requests, um, communications, property management. Um, and then, I mean, really important that everyone, almost everyone who speaks talks about the sense of community and how much pride they have in there and they want to stay there and they want to stay where they live and they want to be supported and want to feel safe and they want to have well-maintained places and that's our mission.
Amen.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Skinner again. So, um, you know, at each of the sessions, we've, again, we've had three so far. We've had at least a plon, most of the board members, uh, have attended. But I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to share any, uh, comments and feedback, uh, that they have, uh, regarding the session.
Sure.
Commissioner Lee.
Um, I have to say, it, it has been, um, truly a pleasure to hear directly from the residents. Um, one of the things that I think really resonates with me, and I think it's important, the residents, as you said, Director Donald, the pride and where they live and their desire, um, to be in their communities, but also a desire to have some ability to contribute. So whether it be like beautification projects, um, there, there was a lot of talk about the ability to engage and participate and have some type of ownership and advocacy and making their neighborhood and their community, um, better. And so I think it's important that we listen and, and really leverage that opportunity. Everyone, you know, wants to have advocacy and, and ownership in where they live and, and that's what they're asking for. So I thought that was great.
Any others?
Um.
Commissioner Sill?
I, um, man, it was, it was very powerful. Um, I am so grateful to have met Ms. Bishop in person, to have met Ms. Kenneth in person. Like that was, it was really powerful that they're not, um, you know, they're not just voices that are speaking to us through virtually, but to actually, uh, meet them in person was, um, incredible. That, you know, that sense of commitment to community was really strong. Um, and what struck me was, um, uh, when, when residents were talking about the, um, services that they need for the youth, the programming that they need for the youth, um, and the linkage to like public safety, uh, the need to keep their, their youth, uh, gainfully engaged, uh, to, 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 to help, um, address some of the safety concerns and, and, and constraints that they are feeling as well, that, that I think like really came through for me. Um, we had a partnership with DACOL that was present at one of, I think it was at Potomac, which was powerful. I think we need the same partnerships with, um, district agencies that serve youth, uh, present and supporting, uh, the housing authority properties as well. And so like that, that might be a place that we could explore further. It seems like we have recreational spaces in all of our, um, facilities. And so like there's a question of how do we leverage those portfolios to help ensure that the resident services we need are on-site as well.
We can give you an update on all of the partnerships by property and there's always room for more. My position is kind of that there's so many resources available in the district that we should, we don't have to create them. We just really need a partner. Yep. And I'm proud that I think on five of our properties, we have families success centers that I started at C F S A that are serving our residents. But we, there's always room for more and more opportunity through your, your walks to make some connections. So Brian Harris heads up the Office of Resident Services and, um, we'll send you that and just to stimulate some thinking about the different partnerships, um, on each of the properties. And the good news is that for the most part, we just have to provide space and, um, and our team last year worked on, um, with our partner agencies so that everyone is working together and with the resident council. So, but we'll send that out.
So congratulations for like really powerful, uh, well-moderated, um, and productive listening sessions. Those were really helpful for me.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I wanted to ditto that. And, uh, I also want to say, you know, I think for us, uh, when, when we hear the, uh, the needs expressed, we need to remember we have to follow through on those. And I don't want, the, the, the thing that keeps coming back is this is the same thing I said so-and-so time or years. It's just, so I'd like to see if we could break that cycle in some ways. Uh, you know, it's a lot, but I think we've got an opportunity to gain more, uh, confidence and trust with the residents if they see actual, and it doesn't have to be monumental. It just, we actually take steps and they, a lot of them didn't express, uh, worldwide change the world. Just right here in my, on, on my floor, in my hallway, for my kids, that kind of thing. So I think that's, that's down there where people live and that's a great gift.
We do have a, have follow-up reports for each of the sessions.
Right.
And on everything that was taken, just like we do with the board meetings and the, the first session that was over at Kinnell Worth, um, like the next day, there were reports about abandoned cars and there were parking and, um, at Kinnell Worth Courts. And the next day, our police department was out and ticketing and engaging. So we'll, if the board is interested, we share those.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to wrap up with Commissioner Burbidge.
Commissioner Burbidge, I just want to say thank you to the board, to Director Donald. This listening session was an opportunity to hear that we are more alike than different. There's no more to say. We are grateful and I have gotten so many compliments from the residents, just saying how grateful they are that you came out, that you took the time and we're seeing positive results. So thank you.
Thanks for your leadership. Yeah. It's been awesome and leading this.
Amazing.
So again, Commissioner Skinner, so our, uh, some of my fellow board members have, uh, talked and complimented, uh, Director Donald and the staff for the great work they've done. They've done a, you know, terrific job, uh, in a short period of time in terms of making changes. But I want to personally thank, uh, my fellow board members for their commitment and the time that they spend. This is a volunteer board. Uh, we, most of us have other jobs, so, uh, but I, I really tru- truly appreciate, uh, the time spent. Uh, we have to review and read all of these policies and procedures before, before we approve them. So it really takes a, a lot of time. So I just want to thank and compliment my fellow board members for their commitment and the work that they do in helping to move this agency forward.
Amen.
Okay. So, so at this time, uh, we're going to have testimony, uh, from, uh, residents. So, so we have a lot of residents who've signed up to testify today. So I would ask you to make sure that you keep your comments, um, two to three minutes aloud. Uh, so, uh, just out of respect for your fellow residents, there are a lot, as I mentioned, uh, who signed up today. So we want to make sure that everyone gets a chance. So please, uh, keep your comments to three minutes. And, uh, I'm going to ask Alicia to, to start the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first I have on the list is Mr. Dale Brown. Mr. Brown, are you available for your testimony? I see we are unmuted. I'll move on. Uh, Annie Jones?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Ms. Annie Jones and I am a DC resident and I am a voucher holder. Um, I heard from the members on the board and I have not been to a DC housing meeting since I can say a good five years because of the pandemic and prior to the last one that we had. And then one of the important issues that I want to raise by living in the Woodbridge area and, uh, over near Brooklyn area, because I'm on Roale Island Avenue Northeast, I have not, um, had the feedback from the staff and I'm sure the director of DC Housing is there. And I have not met you. Can you say something? Hello? Is she there? The director of DC Housing?
She actually stepped out for a moment.
Oh, she did? Okay. Cause, um.
She should be, she should be right back.
Okay. Cause what I, um, was, uh, interested in is that this time I am a senior and I wanted to be a first-time home buyer. Uh, prior to 2018, I did go through the family sufficiency, but, uh, I know there was a lot of issues and portents raised on public housings for people that are through DC Housing in that program. But then there also needs to be, uh, very supportive from other recipients that are voucher holders such as myself. We have such a broad, wide, uh, avenues to where we can have the opportunity of choosing the homes and all complexes to where we want to live with the support that HUD and DC Housing is assisting us. And that was one of the main issues that I want to raise is that when we do call DC Housing, it would be proficiently to us that somebody would be spun because I just recently submitted an application to want to move from my location as residing here for five years to be a first-time home buyer. And it was a DC voucher homeownership application. And with the person that is with housing, she did not, um, consider me. And plus I met all the eligibility criteria, which was a senior, I am a retiree and I am disabled. And considering all those three minimums that you said that is the eligibility, um, she considered me ineligible. And so now, uh, I wanted to know why her supervisor did not call me Ms. Payne. Another thing with that, there is an issue that I had with because of disturbances and noises by me being an older person over 65 years of age. And this is one of the main reasons that I wanted to relocate a couple of years ago. I mentioned about it. Everyone else.
So Ms. Ms. Jones, let's do this. Um, we, we'll have, uh, Ms. Gavereas, uh, to follow up with you. Uh, she, uh, oversees the Housing Choice Voucher Program and we, we have your contact information so we can have her follow up with you and, uh, talk specifically about, uh, your issue.
Uh, next is, uh, Ms. La Monica Walton. Ms. Walton? I don't think she's there. I'll continue. Uh, next is Camila Lithicum. Ms. Lithicum, are you there? And if you need to unmute, it is star six nine to unmute if you're on a cell phone. Uh, next is Annette Black. Annette Black?
Hello?
Yes, is this Annette Black?
Yes.
Okay, please continue. You have three minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to say my experience with section, I mean, with D C H A. Um, and I really want to say, like, you had me so emotional and I thank you for everything you're doing now. But, um, I'm sorry. Um, I'm a current customer with D C H A. I walk on eggshells with the agency. My journey began with public housing. Um, my, I went through a hearing because my unit was done. So with that being said, um, I was displaced and I had to live in a garage while pregnant with my child. Um, I never got an apology. So currently right now, um, I'm a voucher holder like the young lady before. I did sign up for F S S. He told me I wasn't able, I wasn't, um, able to participate with the program because it's a public voucher. I've been working for 17 years. Um, I wanted to say, um, also I was issued, um, I'm sorry, employees aren't friendly. They're aggressive. They have accusations and threats to their customers in regards to recertification. I personally pay for next-day delivery. I follow up by emails, phone calls and voicemails. Either I'm not, um, either I'm not working or poor. With all those steps, another letter was sent to my house and I was terminated. I asked my worker, can I just send her everything that I did? She said, no, just redo everything and send it in two days. Um, when it comes to, uh, as I said, I work, I've been working 17 years and when I present on my bills, you know, I think that, you know, houses should really take into consideration that whatever you put out, you don't have it. I'm a family of four. All of my children, including myself, is diabetes. I make sure they eat healthy by myself. I eat chips, water and ice because I can't afford to maintain my family. Um, in 2022, July, it was supposed to be a nice moment for me, but the landlord told me he needs me out of his house because he can get $4,000, um, for a month and he needs to renovate. I pay on time. I do minor renovations whenever he is needed, but now I have no place to go. I can't, I don't have any monthly rent to move on to another unit. And the other option is, you know, moving to southeast and I'm not a person that is, you know, um, okay, all parts of southeast are bad, but I don't think that every person that has a voucher should be just subjected to go to a property house in southeast or apartment in southeast.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Ms. Black. Again, uh, we can have staff follow up directly with you. We have your contact information.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Uh, next is Sheila Evans. Ms. Evans?
Good afternoon, commissioners, representatives and committee. Developmental, uh, holders, remote access. I'm asking for a case of listing of the new units available, homes, or, and these. This is DC.
Ms. Evans, we can't, we can't hear you.
It's a bad connection.
Hello? Are you still there? We're, we're not hearing you, Ms. Evans. Yeah. So Ms. Evans, we'll try to come back to you. We have bad connection. Let's see if we can come back to you later.
Hello? Hello?
Okay. Good, go ahead. We can, we can hear you better now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please continue. I think we can hear you a little better now.
Oh, okay. Today I will be speaking on voucher holders and necessity. I am requesting that we have a bit of this. Um, DC.
Ms. Evans, you're breaking up. We really can't understand what you're saying. So what, we have, yeah, we have your contact and, uh, we'll have staff follow up with you.
Yes, we'll have someone contact you, Ms. Evans. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Um, I'll move on. Uh, Ms. Canetta, uh, I'm, or Canetta Knight?
Hello, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, so I am not a voucher holder. Um, I thought I was, but I found out that I'm not. And I found out that I was not on a DC waiting list, housing waiting list. But since 2018, when I was holding the, um, housing unit in Richardson Dwelling, um, August of 2018, I received the eviction notice from Richardson Dwelling telling me that I had to, um, surrender the apartment. So when I got to the apartment, I had noticed that all of my stuff was packed up and ready to move out as if someone was, well, someone was in an apartment because it was packed up. But shortly after that, the end of 2018, going into 2019, my paycheck started getting garnished. The first. The first one was three hundred and something dollars. The second one was three hundred and something dollars, adding up to six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um, between the dates of February seventeenth to February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, I had an email conversation with the housing manager explaining that I did not reside in the apartment since two thousand eighteen. And she told me if I don't surrender the apartment, I will be evicted. And I told her I was already evicted and I did not reside in the apartment. Um, through the years of the conversation, I was sent back and forth from Richardson Dwelling man, housing manager and um DC Housing Authority. I was going back and forth. DC Housing Authority tell me they did not evict me and they did not send me a court order and vice versa. So right now, I'm in a bind of not knowing what to do because I have a court out, a court order out under DC Housing and I'm trying to get my first time homebuyer's home. As well as this year, I received a letter from DC Housing stating that I owe back rent for the address I live now and is not a DC Housing address. And DC Housing this year garnished my DC tax refund for over a thousand dollars. And I need that money. Like, I need my money. Um, it was a co-owner letter telling me I had access, but I don't have access to the DC Housing website. As well as I believe that DC Housing didn't remove my information off of the apartment when they evicted me.
Okay, uh Ms. Knight, again, um, we will have someone follow up with you. I'm just not clear on what your situation is, so uh we need, we need to follow up.
Uh, thank you. Next is uh Darren Burns. Darren Burns. Okay, I'll continue. Linda Cunningham. Linda Cunningham. Uh next is Nancy Harrison. I'm sorry, Harbison. Nancy Harbison. Hey, I'll continue. Uh Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, are you there? Star six to unmute. I will continue. Linda Brown. Linda Brown.
Hello? Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My apologies. This is the representative for Lily, for Linda Cunningham. I did not know, I was just pressing the muter or mute button and I didn't know it was star six until I heard you advise someone else. So could I have the turn, please, for Linda Cunningham?
Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. Um, yes, my name is Lilian Crawford Abinses and I am a court-appointed guardian for Linda Cunningham, who presently resides at Hopkins Apartments. Um, one of the main reasons for my appointment in two thousand seventeen was to assist with the housing needs at DCHA, more specifically for ADA reasonable accommodation. It has now, it is now approaching six years and the situation has not been resolved. In fact, Ms. Cunningham got an approval since two thousand and eleven. I cannot speak to what the communications may have been between her daughter, who is her appointed or approved living aid. And in fact, that approval did not come until two thousand eighteen, when after it was initially requested in two thousand thirteen. So that gives you an idea of what is happening with Ms. Cunningham. I have visited the DCHA office. From on our early two thousand eighteen, I have been in contact with Ms. Catrice Mack, who was the um program specialist. I think her name might also be Ms. Hawkins. And I have provided information, my relevant documents. Ms. Mack indicated to me that she was not going to treat my application as the initial application because there had been previous communications with Ms. Cunningham and her daughter, and I guess there were some rejection or unpleasantness. However, what has to be taken into account, I was appointed in two thousand seventeen to deal with this matter. I've spoken to Ms. Mack. I've spoken to Ms. Chakrita McDaniel. I have called. I have sent emails. I have provided the supporting documents. I have even gotten the doctor, Dr. Girah, to send, to send a second certification indicating that Ms. Cunningham cannot climb stairs. She cannot climb steps. And all that has happened over the years so far now is that my emails are being ignored, telephone calls are not being answered, and so this is the last step as far as I'm concerned. You, you all need to help. This lady is now approaching seventy. She has been waiting for twelve years for this matter to be resolved. I don't think it's fair. And of course, it totally goes against the grain of the policy of DCHA for people with disabilities. Ms. Cunningham has tougher things to choose.
But thank you for bringing this to our attention. And again, uh we'll have staff to follow up.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl Moore. Cheryl Moore?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, this is Cheryl Moore.
Yes, my name's Cheryl Moore. Thank y'all for having me on this meeting this afternoon. At Henson Ridge Town Home One, eighteen eighty-two Alabama Avenue. I'm also the ANC community area, AC zero five. I'm on this phone to like, to let y'all know actually what's going on. I've been wrongly terminated for my Section Eight voucher. I've been in my unit since two thousand and three. I get recertified like early year from Henson Ridge Town Home, which was under edge will management. And then they switched over in January to another company. Somebody like had dropped the ball because I went up to the housing office on March the sixteen of two thousand twenty-three to um require about a home ownership program. And they told me I was terminated, terminated from the program. And I'm like, wait a minute, what's going on? But I've been paying my part of the rent since I've been here, been getting recertified. And the town, Henson Ridge Town Home, didn't ever inform me what was going on. They didn't know. And then when I reached out to Ms. Diggs, she got an attitude talking about, um, I told you, um, housing specialist, and I'm trying to find out what's going on before I get evicted. And I'm not the only one over here at Henson Ridge that received notice that we was terminated. Um, like they representative and it's just too much going on because I'm trying to figure out how they giving out vouchers and taking vouchers too. Somebody dropped the ball and I'm dealing with Wayne Wallace where he's no help because he got smart with me too, saying I got nine and ten people calling him. What do you expect? I've never had nine and ten people calling him instead of being out on the street unless you're gonna have me come move with him. It's the, just the disrespect that they show people when they're in the wrong. They had you filling out your package, turn it in at eleven thirty-three. If something go wrong, they would send your package back through the mail with your um driver's license, social security card, birth certificate. All that coming through the mail that could get lost. So something has to give because it's too much dis- been going on since March the sixteen. And it's getting a lawyer and going to the- too much. And I'm tired of talking. It's like I'm talking and nobody listening.
Okay, Ms. Moore, we are listening and we, and we hear you. And again, we, we will have um the Housing Choice Voucher staff follow up directly with you.
Thank you. Next is Shanti Hi. Ms. Hi?
Yes, thank you. Proverbs twenty-eight one, "The wicked flee when no one pursues, but the righteous are bold as a lion." DCHA Director Brenda Donald to depart the agency read the headlines of the Washington Post just six short days ago. However, upon her arrival at this agency, Brenda Donald pledged that she would be quote-unquote transparent, have an open door policy, would work harmoniously with the resident councils, and that she would turn the agency around, end quote. What I've actually seen is a woman who came into the agency to continue breaking up communities, working with the former, uh, the former board that called her out on her lackluster performance so that she gets her friend, the mayor, to reform the board to get things done her way, like a spoiled little child throwing a tantrum. A person who don't, who didn't complete all of the tasks she was supposed to complete before exiting, stage right even. Because families cannot get their voucher workers on the phone or to answer back via email. There uh, there are families losing their vouchers due to failed communication of DCHA. And this has been a uh totally piss-poor performance from my stand, uh, from a standpoint in that wants to try to highlight some of the so-called quote-unquote good that she has done with no actual concrete proof to show that when residents are calling, still calling, coming into the BOC meeting, crying and complaining about the same disheartening issues. Brenda Donald didn't complete the Resident Management Corporation, the Section Three Plan with the first, first focus on employment and the other focused on contracts for small businesses, the Park Morton Resident Return Plan for residents to use their vouchers to return the home ownership portion of Park Morton for Park Morton residents. The budget to execute any of it has not been done. How can you leave when you haven't finished the task you started and promised you see through? Especially after giving yourself a bonus, you don't feel compelled to answer uh to anyone about, including the Oversight Committee. By our calculations, in two years Brenda Donald has made five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus the bonus brings that to a whopping five hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And this doesn't include any private kickbacks she may have received for any deal she's made. Ephesians four twenty-eight, I'm wrapping up, I'm wrapping up. Let, let the thief no longer steal, but rather let him labor doing honest work with his hands so that he may have something to share with anyone in need. And as I close, I will reiterate that more residents need more residents need to make this type of money.
Um, I'm told Ms. Nancy Harbison is on the line. Ms. Harbison? I think you were unable to speak earlier. Star six, if you need to unmute, Ms. Harbison. Uh, Ms. Matthews, I'm told Ms. Matthews is actually on. Star six, Ms. Matthews. Okay, I'm gonna continue. Uh Kenneth Council. Mr. Council, are you on? Okay, I'll continue. Uh Lakisha Schingler?
Hi, good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good afternoon. You have three minutes, please, to continue.
I'm sorry, good afternoon, everyone. I stand corrected. My name is Lakisha Schingler and I am a resident here at Kelly Miller Lee Joy. I just want to bring to the forefront just concern as far as maintenance is concerned. Um, my family and I went several days without a refrigerator and the work order was placed on the day that I observed that it wasn't working, which was on a Friday morning. I was advised by the property manager that it won't be fixed or replaced the same day. I was delayed in receiving accurate information from the property manager, manager on filing a official complaint on reimbursement. And now finally going through the process of a fair hearing because risk management team saw no negligence on their part. My question is, what is the protocol for maintenance when work orders are placed and the timeframe residents should expect for a response and a completion?
Yes.
Okay.
Give her a call, yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Schingler, we'll, we'll have to get back to you um on that. And, and you know, again, we'll have staff contact you and we can follow up.
Tomorrow.
Okay, and, and also, if I can just add to that, um, I just also too am just curious about the property boundary lines that uh these townhome halves because I've been told two different, two different times on two different occasions from two different property man-
Okay, we, we will follow up with you, Ms. Schingler.
Uh, next is Lenise Moore. Ms. Lenise Moore?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm a Housing Choice Voucher. I have a Housing Choice Voucher. And I understand that tenants have rights. But do tenants have a right to continue to break the law? If, if their unit has been um busted twice, well raided twice, how come they haven't been terminated, their lease hasn't been terminated? It's because there is a clause in the private, private, the, the, um, the lease of the private landlord who says on the termination part that um it's up to the landlord to terminate a tenant if they violate the police regulations. And I was hoping that maybe in the future that um the board member can have the landlords um change their, their, um, their lease contract on with housing. Because if you violate um your lease, uh it should be an automatic termination. Houses should not be raided in and the tenants should um still be able to live in there, continue to break the law, like selling illegal drugs or um having firearms in your unit. And whereas though we can't get no peace or there's no security in the building, every time the landlord fixes the door, they breaks the door. There's traffic, constant traffic twenty-four seven, whereas though we can't get any sleep. So I'm just hoping that you guys can ask these private landlords to change their, um, their, their lease agreements. Whereas though it shouldn't be up to the landlord to terminate a, a tenant um if they violate police regulations.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Uh, next is uh Rajan Middleton. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Rajan Middleton? Okay, I'll continue. Uh Patricia Bishop?
Hello, this is Ms. Middleton.
Okay, Ms. Middleton, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Hello, um, I was calling because um I'm in a situation with my, I'm in an insufficient program to purchase a house. And um, they lost my paperwork three times. So this is like my three-strikes-you're-out time. And now they're still giving me some BS about it. So now my landlord is selling the property. Um, at first he was gonna sell to me. Now he said that um he doesn't take the third-party money, which is HPA. So he wants me, he don't want to sell to me because I don't have cash. He wants cash now. And then I've been looking for properties and like in the, I'm in the Brooklyn area. The Brooklyn area is asking for twenty-eight twelve. The landlords are raising it up to thirty-one, thirty-one, thirty-one. So wherever you go look for a property at, the landlords are raising it up four or five hundred dollars more.
So, Ms. Middleton, are you a voucher holder?
Yes, I am. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Ms. Middleton, I think you need to have some representation here because they can't, they have to give you the first right to purchase this property and they can't just uh move you out. So don't-
I went to Top, I went to Topa.
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 Then a right to purchase, yes, ma'am.
I went to Topa and um he then changed it where he doesn't want a third-party to um participate in the purchase. And he then changed it to cash.
Selling, you sell.
No, he can't do that. So I, you just need some representation here. Yeah, Office of Tenant Advocate is who I'd go to. The Office of Tenant Advocate.
Our Office of Tenant Advocate, okay, all right.
They have great resources.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Uh, next is Patricia Bishop. Bishop, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Good afternoon, Bishop.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It seems like my work is not easy at all, being a president or on the Citywide Advisory Board. Tiny steps compared to bigger problems. Trying to maintain all this cool and not cry in front of y'all because this hurts. Like I said, I take this very passionately of what has been continuing to go on. But these people having these problems, somewhere it must stop if it starts at the bottom of these people talking to these people and not getting anything resolved. Somebody is not taking into consideration that these people are human beings as well as everybody else. Enjoyed sitting with y'all at every listening session. Well, we got more listening to do, more understanding, more compassion towards the people. I'm sick and tired of hearing this over and over. Uh, people coming up here complaining about situations that should have been handled what day one. I need more clarity on green leaf and black and white. And what's going on with the remodelization, with the air, every bit of it. And I hate to even say that I can't stand to keep seeing rats. I really can't. All their rat holes. And nothing's been done about it. On every property, it's almost the same thing from every tenant of public housing. And it hurts me to my heart that even the people that are in Section Eight has just as many problems as we do in public housing. I appreciate sitting with y'all, listening to y'all. But just like I feel compassionate enough to do my job, Starboard, be a star and shine above and beyond. Because once again, we have helped the people that we are supposed to see that their living condition and their mental state of mind and their health be number one as well. And that's stop talking because I'm hurt. Once again, I am hurt.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Bishop. Um, we, we thank you for your service and we know, um, that we must do better and we will do better.
Uh, next is Patricia Malloy. Ms. Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
This is Patricia Malloy. I'm the former Lincoln Heights Resident Council President of Lincoln Heights. I was relocated to the Strand. I have some concerns for Lincoln Heights but I wanna thank Ms. Eve and Ms. Joseph. When they had the listening session at Kenilworth, Ms. Eve, she listened at me very, very content. Lincoln Heights is a distressed property. Lincoln Heights have no foreman. Right now they have no manager. The staff needs serious, serious guidance and supervision. Monday, there was a shooting and there was a shootout in Lincoln Heights at twelve o'clock Monday. Monday night, they found a resident deceased at forty-nine sixty-two E's. The buildings are not being cleaned. They smell of urine and feces. The buildings that are not being cleaned is the four hundred block of Fifty Street. Also, the two hundred block of Fifth and Fifth First Street. Residents are so discouraged. I don't know what's going on with the phones. No one answers the phones. No one. No one. I have considered contacting the O A G in regards to the lawsuit that was filed. I don't know, Starboard, if you are aware that Lincoln Heights is one of the properties. There were some guidelines that the previous director signed off on with Carl Racine to settle this matter in court. I feel that they are not being met and they are not being settled. It is terrible. The property, the buildings are filthy. You have a brand new building, three hundred fifty-first Street, that was renovated by a contractor. On Monday, one of the units, the pipe bursted. When they opened up the wall yesterday, there was a nail in the pipe. Thank God, um, the Director of Maintenance came out to the, uh, three hundred apartment twelve this morning to make sure that the wall was, the pipe was fixed and the wall was plastered. This is a brand new build, this is a brand new renovated build of our contractor. Who's inspecting these units? I know you all don't wanna hear what I have to say, but I'm taking upon myself to ask the Office of the Attorney General to reopen Lincoln Heights, uh, lawsuit and to find the housing authority. Ms. Eve, I know you're doing the best that you can, but someone needs to either remove all the staff at Lincoln Heights and put new staff or sit there and babysit there. Thank you for listening.
So, Ms. Malloy, I know we, we've heard you for the last several board meetings and, um, talk about some of the issues at Lincoln Heights. And, you know, I guess from the board perspective, uh, we don't know all the details of what's going on there, but I, I promise you that the board will follow up with the staff and see if we can, uh, get to the bottom of what's going on at Lincoln Heights.
The only thing I ask, pull the settlement and read it for yourself. Reports are supposed to be submitted monthly to the Office of, uh, to the Attorney General's office. Who's signing off on these reports? But thank you, um, Commissioner Skinner. And, you know, at one meeting, I do wanna thank Ms., um, Blackson and Ms. Bishop, when I did come over to Kenilworth. You all were very helpful and very, I, I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate Rachel and Ms. Eve for actually sitting down, listening to, listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Thank you. Uh, I'm told Kenneth Council is on now. Mr. Council, are you there? If you dial then press star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not gonna belabor. But, uh, three, three minutes is not enough. We went from five down to three. That's not enough. But I'll proceed. I'm curious and I wanna know again, what is going on with the assisted living at the Marigold? And what I'm hearing is that the property is being sold and the commissioners do not know that the properties are being sold. We have over fifty and I'm s- and I'm hearing that we have forty-three now. So can you all look into that? And yet again, I'm gonna continue to ask, where is the paperwork for eleven thirty-three? The headquarters have been sold, but it has not come across your board nor have you given it to the public to state that that is true and you have paperwork to prove it? Even the amount of money that it was sold for and the incentive that was not told to the public yet, I don't know if it's been brought in front of you all yet. The overpayment of the vouchers. And the residents, yes, I'm still getting phone calls. And I try to circumvent them back to who should have it. People are being encouraged to take a voucher because all of the public housing is being given to developers. Can you all look into that? It's appalling to hear that you all say that so much has been going on and they're moving so quickly with an iron fist. How can you take a building that was deemed to be tore down? You go in and do it over. Patricia Malloy just said that that was a mistake yet again. Who's going in? Where's the quality control to make sure that you're not putting people back into a sick building? And then to have, uh, 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 Director Brenda Walker go out the door with money that can't be answered to, just walking out the door with it. It's appalling and you all are giving her credit for what she's done. It's not right. It's totally disrespectful. Quote unquote, and I've heard plenty of times, I'll be gone, let them figure it out. It's not my problem. Not only the newspapers, but the world are watching us and they seeing just how the city works, the government works. It's appalling. It's embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Council.
Uh, next is Rayanna Miller. Ms. Miller, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Proceed.
Um, I sent several emails, um, with Director Donald. Mrs. Skinner, you probably, um, recently been c- copied on a few of them as well. And Wayne Waller to include, uh, Olivia Rudd. Um, I, I sent emails in reference to the mandatory transfer ladder that we receive on, on a number of occasions. And we haven't received answers as to what hazardous, hazardous, um, issues that were found in our home. And I asked that question because some of us are dealing with health issues and we have been denied the right to know what hazardous material was found within our home. Hello?
Yes, we're here. We can hear you.
You can hear me.
Okay, so we have been denied the right to know what hazardous material that was, um, found within our home. I asked on a number of occasions. Also, we asked what was the flat rate for the public housing unit that we're living in because we, again, have not received that information. And, um, management, to include the individuals that I have, um, mentioned earlier, haven't been able to give us that information. We have also been charged for air conditioners, which, um, it goes against our lease. Within the lease that we have signed, anything provided by D C H A, we are not supposed to be paying for. However, we are paying for additional items on our, on our rent statement. And I have brought this to their attention many of times, but no one, um, seems to correct or make the, uh, proper adjustments. Previously, when, um, Don Boyd was the property manager, she made the adjustments, but then it somehow went back to, um, the increase in rent. Rent has not been increased, um, in a number of years. And I did hear that there may be some slightly changes with that. However, over, over ten years, also twenty years, our, our ventilation has not been, um, hasn't, our ducts has not been clean. And that's dealing with other, it triggers health issues, the moisture in the units, the pests running around within the walls. So people are breathing in this on a daily basis and, uh, we called it in, on a numerous of times and no one seems to come out to clear it out. I have sent pictures and, and also you can see through the vent, vents where the dust had built up over twenty years of dust where no one is actually pulling it out. So just imagine the cold and the hot and just turning on your A C and you have to breathe in that the air quality is poor. But, um, someone else mentioned about, um, bonuses and to receive that where the properties are not getting even the support that they need is, is, is a slap in the face where that money can be allocated and put somewhere else.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Miller. Uh, again, we have your contact information. I did receive your emails and we will follow up.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ronald Smith. Mr. Smith, are you there? Okay, I'll move on. Donna Towns, Ms. Donna Towns.
Hello, I have a question real quick. Did y'all call Paul at Matthews?
Yes, we did, Ms. Matthews. You can go ahead right now.
Oh, okay, thank you, cuz I was in the middle of something and was trying to get up. But I actually, I never really get my questions answered. So right now I'm just gonna make a couple of statements. First of all, um, hello, everybody.
Hello, Ms. Matthews.
I have a lot of situations that are going on and I've had them going on ever since I left Berry Farms, um, to come to Killer Miller. Uh, most of my issues have been related to, um, my emotional stress dogs and the certain things that I need to be accommodated with. There has been a long history of this since two thousand and, um, two thousand nineteen. Uh, there, there's a lady by the name of Ms. Joseph. I would like to know whether or not she has, uh, a M D or something behind her name, um, to be able to deny me, um, when my, when the whole, um, A D A request was for the safety of me, my dogs, and, um, the residents. Um, I went through a lot with this fence, okay? Un- unbelievable, um, the fact that I, I had two, uh, stop work orders on them. I find myself, um, over at Howard or somewhere looking for my dogs. I just recently had to do that. When Mr. Joe was here actually, um, putting it up, I was saying, no, the bars should be up. I found out later that prior Mr. Oliver, which I don't know why they're shaded all the way down. My dogs are still able to hop. My front fence, it's like a design on it cuz the poles are real long and they go up and down and up and down somewhere of that nature. But because my dogs are pretty much housed in the back, that should have been lifted. And so here I am, getting ready to have a hearing. I'm putting in the paperwork for it because she's trying to tell me, she doesn't know my emotional state. So that's why I wanna know if she's in the audience. I would like for y'all to ask her, is she a medical professional? Because she's overriding with my doctor and my psychiatrist have said. And she don't know who I am and what I go through on a daily basis. Okay, and then, um, I've had a lot of property that has been damaged here as well. Um, lights that I have in semblance of my, my son who got killed in two thousand and nineteen. Now, I, I get it, kids got hoverboards and all of that and they grab onto the fence and so they, they, my lights have gotten broke. Um, and it, it happened again and they denied me and they called, the first time they paid me, it took a while, so I bought them before they even sent me the money. Then, um, those lights got destroyed. Then I was told, oh, we're not, um, replacing them because your place was vandalized. I asked them, why aren't they using these cameras that they claim that they have? Because somebody needs to pay for them, whether, cuz if anybody does something to come to my house, I'm responsible for it. So if D C H A can't find out who's responsible for it, then they are responsible for it. Or what is the sense of the cameras? The, the police? I don't know. I've asked before, just like I've asked if the residents could speak first. I asked that the police do a report all the time. It'd be gunfight going on throughout all the public housing, um, development and, and a word is hardly ever said. I think that there should be a report so that people can know what's going on around all over in every public housing cuz people still visit places and they should know. They keep everything like a top secret. And, and how is it that they can always not manage to have, uh, the, the footage? So that you, cuz I requested footage on several different times. And not one time had they been able since two thousand nineteen to provide the footage. And I remember when, um, Tyrone Garrett used to say he could be in Florida and see stuff. I don't understand why the, uh, police can't see this with all these cameras and all this bright lighting that they got out here now that at the end of the day, the results is still nothing. Um, so I would like that question to be asked. My time probably be running out, but it's not enough time. Y'all oughta have some type of form where, you know, people come in.
Ronald Smith was online, but y'all didn't give him a chance to speak. Can he speak now, please?
Mr. Smith, okay, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. Um, I, I was, my, I just wanna ask a few questions. Uh, with the revelation of the reinstatement of the voucher program, uh, I am anxious to learn the process of, of, of how you go about securing a voucher. I've been waiting, I've been on the waiting list since January two thousand and six. And, uh, I've continuously stayed, you, you know, brought this up and did different meetings and stuff like that to know if they're, they kept me, somebody's gonna get with me. The only person that has, that had shown, shown courtesy is Mr. Waller. Uh, but, oh, the question that I have, that, that's the primary question that, that I have about the voucher program because I'm anxious to just leave from where I currently reside and I've been here for, on, on six years. And, uh, I don't care to just, uh, go over the, uh, over the phone. I don't wanna- I don't want to discuss everything that's occurring in this building right here, right? Or in and around this property. But me and my wife both wants a handicap and we need to get out of here. So, um,
Okay, Mr. Smith. So I'm gonna let Ms. Gabreys talk about the, the process, the voucher process.
Oh, sure. So, uh, I'll be happy to follow up with you, uh, uh, directly as well. But with the, what we had before the update to the admin plan was that homeless preference took first priority. So if you're housed somewhere else, even if you applied many years ago, the chances of us getting to you are gonna be very slim. But now with the update to the admin plan and we're just going by date and time of application, we are reaching out, as Director Donald announced earlier, we are gonna be issuing over a thousand vouchers this year. And so, uh, we'll just make sure, I think we do have your correct, uh, updated information. And so invitations are being sent out, um, to folks on our reading list based on their original date and time of application. So please stay tuned. Yes.
Okay, I don't know how much more time I have, but I just wanted, uh, uh, bring something to, to y'all's attention because it may be, it may be beneficial to other residents.
Just very, very quickly, Mr. Smith, your time is up, but if,
Okay, well, I, 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 I reserve just for a later date then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all of the resident comments. Next, we're gonna go to, uh, our resolutions.
Excuse me, I love.
She finally was able
Hello. Hello, my name is Nancy Harbison. Can everyone hear me?
Okay, yes.
Hello, I forgot to call us Laurie also. I'll go next.
Okay, I'll try to be as quick as possible. Hello, my name is Nancy Harbison. I live in Ward Six and I am a H C V P voucher recipient. I have recertified my documents last year for current housing dwelling. However, the landlord presented D C H A with intent to sell agreement, which put my family at risk. The house has been sold this year as of two thousand twenty-three and I must now relocate from this dwelling. I have did my recertification. I have found, um, a decent place to live and a prospective landlord. Um, and we did our re cer, I mean, your lease package. We did that, um, Wednesday last week. And we have not heard anything back and cannot get any updates. My landlord has reached out to over ten people with Noah Vale. She has not heard back from anybody. And when I call, no one will give me information because apparently they can't give me any information. It has to go through the landlord, but I'm not asking for any of her personal information. Just confirmation that D C H A has received the lease package between me and the prospective landlord. I have been unsuccessful with my attempts, um, to get my paperwork that is vital to housing. D C H A stresses to us that it needs to come back with them in a timely manner. However, we rushed to get everything done only for the paperwork to sit atop someone else's desk to expire and then we have to start the process all over again. In the meantime, if we did find the police and toured it and applied like I did and submitted all of our paperwork for it to be approved, we can't move into the new place, um, until the paperwork has went through the channels that it needs to be or go through and be completed in the house.
Ms. Harbison. Ms. Harbison, we'll, we'll, we'll be in touch with you no later, today or tomorrow, to, to make sure that we get it all straightened out.
Thank you, Ms. Harbison.
Hello. Hello. Hello.
Who's speaking, please?
Who's this?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, this is, yeah, this is Ms. Laurie. I live at twenty-four twenty-two Ontario Road. I'm probably familiar with a lot of people already on the board. I just want to, um, I just, I just would like, um, Ms. Gabreys to give me a call. I, um, I have been, been, uh, first of all, let me start and say that I have been getting some help from housing. I ran into an issue that I sent an email out to, uh, Ms. Carter, Ms. Barnes, uh, a couple of people. I didn't get an answer, so I'm asking if someone would call. I'm asking Ms. Gabreys. I think she's in charge of housing voucher.
Um, I had a, Call this afternoon.
Who is this?
This is, this is Hamara Gabreys. I'll call you this afternoon.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Laurie.
Hello, my name is Kendra Beaman and I didn't get a chance to speak.
Hello.
Are you,
Hello.
Are you a resident? Ms. Beaman, you're not on the list.
No, she's on the next line. It's non-resident.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, I, I do see you. You're on the non-resident list. So, uh, we're gonna take our, up our resolutions and then we're gonna come back and have the non-residents speak. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, uh, the first resolution for board consideration.
Hello, sir.
Excuse me.
Hello, sir.
The next item for board consideration is Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Hello.
Who is going to present?
Please.
I think this was a Capital Projects one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Can we, can we, should we go?
So I'm sorry, everyone online, at this point, you have to stay muted. If we, if you unmute at this point, we will have to expel you from the meeting and you won't be able to rejoin. So we will come back if you were not called on. So please stay muted.
Okay, uh, so this, this resolution is gonna be presented by our Capital Projects Committee, Commissioner, Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, um, so we are, are being asked today to adopt, um, uh, the, a lending policy around our new market tax credit investment and loan policy. Um, and this is to, as the process, uh, or this is the document that guides the process that we use to allocate, um, the new market tax credits that we secure from the Department of the Treasury. Uh, we had, we discussed this at length in our committee. Um, one of the things that we had to understand is that this is based on priorities that, um, a prior board had adopted after a pretty extensive community feedback and input process um, that also included listening to folks inside the agency that understood, uh, how the tax credits have been allocated. So, um, it's also, um, newly, it's a newly required step that the Department of Treasury is requiring issuers of new market tax credits to adopt these policies. And it's important that we adopt them so that we, um, remain compliant with all the regulations that govern the program so that we are able to access additional credits so that we can issue them to other, uh, nonprofit partners in the city. Um, so, uh, happy to have any conversation on this, uh, but I would move that we approve it.
So, uh, this is Commissioner Skinner. Just a point of clarification. My understanding was that we, the, the, the Star Board is really just affirming an action of the D C H E Board that is already taking place. They, they approved the, the policies and we're affirming that.
I believe that is correct. Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, any, any comments or questions on?
Yeah.
Resolution.
This is Commissioner Silla, um, as, um, uh, hoping that we have an opportunity to look at these priorities, um, recognizing that we have to adopt this resolution at this time, but that we're, um, uh, you know, as a new board that's getting to learn, uh, these different programs and the Housing Authority portfolio that we have an opportunity to inform, uh, these policies over time. Um, so we did have that conversation and wanted to be transparent that that's a part of what we are thinking and that we're hoping for over the longer term, even as we're approving this, um, you know, we're on the fast track for approving this based on historical engagements and planning work.
If there are no other comments, the board, uh, chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Silla.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Skinner.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have eight yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next resolution is twenty-three dash twenty-seven to approve the HUD application submission for disposition of the parking lots at Sibley Plaza.
This is another Capital Projects one, and I should have asked John about this. Um, John, is there a deck or a, a, a map of the site that we're talking about that we can show?
Yes, give me one second. I'll get it pulled up.
Okay, thank you. While you're doing that, I think we can sort of at least describe this to you. Um, so this is the, this is, as, as our committee has gotten up to speed, one of the things that it's become abundantly clear to us is that, um, the, the board is asked to approve many things along the way. It's a long journey. Um, and so this is a continuation of a process that the prior board initiated and, um, will certainly continue as additional steps in the process take. So I think we should take some comfort in the fact that we're approving an interim step and that there's lots of steps to come. This relates to Sibley Town Homes, um, which is right behind the property, uh, which you may recall, we did our second listening session at. Um, and the idea that the prior board worked with staff to initiate is to take advantage of, um, some redevelopment opportunities adjacent to the building, um, that will, here we go. John is able to show you some maps. So the, the, if you look at the yellow rectangles, um, the, the building that is not in the yellow rectangle that fronts North Capitol is Sibley Tower, so that's where we, our meeting was. The, uh, to the, on the left, the sort of upside down L, I believe that is Sibley Town Homes. And so, um, I think that we've already asked HUD for approval to demolish those because they are, uh, now out of date and, and need to be replaced. What we're being asked today to do is to approve, um, to, to support the director's request to apply to HUD to take the parking lot, uh, which is in the middle, that middle yellow rectangle. Um, it will be combined, that parcel would be combined with the property that the Sibley Town Homes are on. Um, and a proposal will be, uh, put forth to redevelop that entire site. Um, and in the meantime, there will, I believe, be no loss of parking because we're gonna be relocating that to the lower kind of L shape towards the bottom. Uh, so our understanding is that there is broad support for this proposal. Um, and we are eager to get the R F P out on the street to get a redevelopment, uh, process underway that would result in, in many significant affordable housing, uh, units that currently don't exist. So, um, we were, are asking again that the formal request is to ask the board to authorize the director to ask HUD to dispose of the site. Did I get that correct? Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Skinner, question, uh, so we're, today we're, we're, uh, asking for a request to get permission from HUD to dispose of, uh, parcel B.
Parcel B, that's correct.
So parcel B will then be combined with A and C for a total redevelopment?
I think it's just A, correct? Yeah.
So A and B will be put out in an R F P for redevelopment?
Yes.
What's gonna happen to parcel C?
So I think, I think right now, as I understand it, C had historically been used for D C H A staff parking. And that's being, is that, I think that's being, that's been relocated or obviously not needed anymore now that the headquarters is not there.
There anymore.
And so the idea is that residents who were parking in B will be able to now park in, in C.
Correct.
So is that the long-term, uh, plan for C that it continues open park?
That I'm not sure of, um.
John, are you there?
Yeah. Andre's on the line. I just wanted to, to, to add, um, Commissioner Murphy, you're correct. The, um, the own correction is, uh, um, the C parking lot would be part of the disposition. However, it would not be built on. Um, the buildable area would be A and, and B. And, uh, the C parking lot would be used as a, a, a loading area for the new building.
And Andre, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we've talked about possibly having additional parking under what gets redeveloped in the A and B parcels. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
This one. Um, so C will continue to be for the Sibley Plaza apartment, the building.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, because
That was one thing we asked, yes.
Correct.
Did not want
The residents was an agreement also.
Agreed.
So what is being built on A that'll be parking under?
There's currently,
Commissioner Blackson, I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Blackson, there's, there's currently a, a, R F P that we're, we're still, uh, in the best and final offer stage. Uh, we, we will be working with, uh, residents and stakeholders to finalize exactly what would be built. Um, the developer is just putting together preliminary ideas of what could be built. It still would need, uh, zoning approval, board approval, um, as well as the residents, uh, feedback as well.
Looking forward as a resident to be included on that. I am a resident of Sibley Plaza Town Homes. Thank you.
And yeah, again, this is just an interim step. This is, uh, there will be lots more steps to come that will come before the board. Commissioner Silla, as, um, I mean, I, I think, having been to the site itself, it's very helpful to see that, um, redevelopment is very sorely needed and it's, it's a pleasure to be a part of action that moves us in that direction.
Okay, uh, here are no further comments. Uh, can we get a motion to approve? Motion twenty-three dash twenty-seven for application submission to HUD for disposition of Sibley Plaza parking lots.
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? I'll have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. You have a seven yes and one for Q, so the resolution is approved.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight is the, uh, to authorize execution of a contract for D C H A security guard services. And is that you, Director Donald, to, to introduce that or?
Um, let's, um, All right, so the committee met on May fifth, twenty twenty-three to, to review this contract. Um, there was a great amount of discussion about this contract and the services that are provided through, um, this vehicle. And, um, after the discussion, we concluded that it would be in the best interest to move forward with awarding this contract for at least a year while we go through the budget process to review the security needs of not only the senior projects but the entire, um, D C H A portfolio. And we want to make sure that we take all of this in consideration during the F Y twenty-four budget formulation process. But that's our recommendation.
Okay, um, so I, I see, uh, Ms. Bishop has signed up to provide testimony on twenty-three dash twenty-eight. Ms. Bishop, are you still there?
Yes, I am. I'm still here. Um, looking forward to seeing this contract be approved with the close eye of the citywide advisory board because I do not want people living in any type of inhabitable threat to their life matters and being ignored with problems and issues that go on, on these properties where you place, um, from one security company to another. Let's protect the tenants and do their job and not just ignore. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three, that's twenty-eight.
I move. That we approve.
Commissioner Jones has moved. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Lee, second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eight yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next resolution up is twenty-three dash thirty-one. And this is to authorize execution of an agreement, uh, regarding disposition by Oak Street Preservation of, um, uh, property that Oak Street Pres- Preservation, uh, which I, I think D C H A is the sole member of Oak Street Preservation and we are with disposing a property to Morningstar Community Development. And again, I'm gonna call on, uh, Commissioner Murphy to present that. And again, I'm going to call on Commissioner Murphy to present that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee had a really robust conversation and meeting with the developer on this project. You may recall, this was one that we considered earlier and there was some confusion about some of the information that we had in front of us. I think we got our questions answered at that meeting and I think we're excited to bring it before you today and ask for your support. It's a great project adjacent to the building that we own. It would be approving the director to enter into some preliminary negotiations that would result in an agreement that would allow the developer to continue moving forward in the process. And this is another one where in the future, the developer would come back to us with, for future approvals that would be needed on the project as well. It's, it's, the building is quite a bit larger than our building because it's on quite a bit more square footage. It potentially, the developer is thinking as many as 121 units. And the, one of the things that we talked about, and I think we felt more comfortable when the developer made it clear that his aspiration is for this to be 100% affordable. So we need to authorize the developer for them to start being able to get this through the entitlement process and the financing process to determine ultimately how many units will be in the building. But the aspiration is for it to be 100% affordable. And he certainly understands that that is our, our preference. We are clear now on what's being asked of us in terms of an easement for the, to use the driveway to access the building. There will be only 22 parking spaces in the building, which was fewer than I initially feared. I've talked to a transportation consultant who has assured me that that's a not unreasonable number of cars to have under there and accessing the driveway. So I was concerned about our Oak Street residents being inconvenienced by cars constantly coming out. But I'm comfortable now based on what I've learned that it's, it will not be a tremendous inconvenience to our residents. So I certainly invite other members of the committee to weigh in and share their thoughts. But I do think that we got some level of comfort after talking to the developer about what this project is all about and are excited to bring it before you today.
Yes, I, I'm a neighbor over there.
Okay.
So I have a, you know, I know that property well. And we, I think, to our benefit, our credit, that we said, wait, when we first, it was first presented and asked questions, that then the developer came back and redid some of what he was thinking and clarified a number of things. And I am, and we had a robust discussion about it. And I'm satisfied with where we came. And especially 100% affordable units, we'll have to hold him to it and see if that's possible. But that's, that's, in that section of town that's so highly gentrified, that's a good, that's a good number of affordable units.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Commissioner Harris, go ahead.
I recall this case and the developer was a little bit uneasy with us wanting to wait and ask more questions because of, I guess, some timeframe he had to meet with starting over and things like that. So are we confident and has he confirmed that that is no longer an issue as he stated before?
Yeah, as we understand it, his, I believe his situation was he had some contracts that gave him rights to the property from the adjacent church, which is eager to redevelop it as affordable. And I, he seems to have either extended those deals or whatever the timeframe was. But he is eager for us to move forward today.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, Ms. Bishop has signed up to testify on Resolution 23-31. Ms. Bishop, are you there?
Yes, I am. I appreciate the affordability. But I have concerns. I need to know which part of Oak Street in the city is this apartment, this apartment building, the place it's located at? And how many bedrooms are there per unit? Because we have a lack of bedrooms. The reason why I'm asking is because of the lack of bedroom for larger families. And it always do sound good, but I'd like to know how many bedrooms and what section of the city this is located in.
So this is in Columbia Heights. And it's actually, technically, this product, this project is actually not on Oak Street, right? Our building is on Oak Street. This project is on Meridian?
Meridian.
Yeah. And we will not know the configuration of the proposed units until the developer really works on the financing plan for that. But we take your point and I think, you know, I think there were a couple of things that we, at least, well, there's one thing that I felt sorry about. I think we want to urge the staff when they do this negotiation. We want them to be talking to the developer ultimately about a loading plan so that our residents aren't tremendously inconvenienced when there's pickups and drop offs in the morning in terms of trash and things. But that also, we can ask the developer to sort of take that into consideration, the unit configuration issue as he moves forward. And obviously, he's working closely with the church.
Church and the ANC. He's gotten approval from the ANC as well.
So this will be an issue they'll be focused on as well.
The church is a long-term church in the neighborhood. Yes.
Please mute. So. Okay, so we're going to move for Resolution for, to approve Resolution 23-31.
Motion to.
Commissioner Lee, motions, second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Silla?
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eight yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, then we're going to move to Resolution 23-32. And this is to authorize submission to the Council of District of Columbia, a local rent supplement program for listener independent affordable project. And that's Commissioner Murphy?
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner. We can, we can, we can provide the background on it if you want. It's a little unusual that are typical.
Yes. This is, Good afternoon, Hammera Gabrius, Intern Senior VP for the voucher program. This is a project that is under the Local Rent Supplement Program. It's a sponsor, it's a project sponsor-based. So as you guys may know, we have a consolidated NOFA process where we partner with Department of Housing and Community Development and actually the Chief of Staff, Seega Bakela, is also on the line in case there are any specific projects, questions about the project. But through the process that we have now, DHCD makes the selections, the housing authority administers the Local Rent Supplement Program contract. And so back in November, this was one of the projects that had been approved by the board as being able to move forward. So because this is a locally funded program, we have to have the authorization from the board to then submit the contracts to council. And what's happened is that DHCD has made a change to the allocation for this particular route, so for this particular project. So instead of 26 units, they've increased it to 52. So we're coming to you today to be able to make that modification before we submit the contract to council and move forward with the project.
And I think it's, Commissioner Silla, I think it's always a great thing when we're getting more affordable units out of any project that we're financing. So this is definitely.
And Commissioner Lee, just, and it looks like these are deeply affordable. This is doubling below 30%. So, and really, all needed.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And this is Commissioner Harris. Is there any mention in the unit sizes that some of our residents have been questioning?
Sure. This one is for seniors. It's an assisted.
Okay.
Yes, it's an assisted living.
And they're smaller. That's fine.
Okay, again, Ms. Bishop has signed up to testify. Ms. Bishop, are you there?
Yes, once again, I appreciate you looking out for the elderly. Let's, let's stay on top of making more units for them and the sizes of their units, especially for the disabled. That's so much needed. And the closet space. Because not everyone has little teeny clothes. Some of us really like to shop and like to have the storage area to place our clothes and shoes.
We'll pass the message along.
Yes. Appreciate y'all. And I would like to stay informed and black on white with each step of these projects.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Okay, so Chair, we entertain a motion to approve Resolution 23-32.
I move that we approve.
Second.
Commissioner Jones approved. Commissioner Lee, second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eight yes. The resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you for that hard work in passing these resolutions. So now we're going to move to general public comments. We have several residents or several.
Non-residents.
Several non-residents, members of the general public who have signed up to provide testimony. And again, each person will have three minutes to provide their testimony.
Thank you. First on the list we have is Mr. William Jordan. Mr. Jordan?
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Jordan.
Good afternoon.
So I wanted to have testified on the New Marcus Tax Credit issue. I remain concerned that the goals of resident, basically resident empowerment and all those things are being sidetracked and we're focused on nonprofits that don't provide the jobs and business and the other opportunities for resident self-sufficiency. And I think that's the biggest problem with the agency is that if we don't empower residents to be full partners, we'll never achieve what we need to achieve. And so I always wanted to make that point. I wanted to make another point over Park Morton, the new communities project. I would like to ask that the project manager for that project over from the community builders be transferred. We had a meeting recently and she made the comment that silos are preventing the project from including the resident self-sufficiency opportunities, the Section 8 and all those contracts and employment. And I think if we have a project manager over there who doesn't understand self-sufficiency, can't work to help make those things happen, we need to get another project manager. We've been dealing with her for three years and we haven't gotten anything concrete done. I also wanted to make the point about the move to work process. I went back and watched that 23-minute video. It's, for something as important as the move to work to be kind of glossed over and checkbox and, you know, just send us your comments is ridiculous. Again, I compare what the move to work is saying about Park Morton. There's a gap between the commitments this agency made and what the move to work says. And it's, and it's just not fair to make promises to residents. Then in the structure, whether it's the zoning agreement, whether it's move to work, whether it's all these other agreements to be misaligned, knowing that if we're going to do these kind of things, you have to do planning and work carefully with residents. Finally, I'll say that I applaud the director and the hard work that people have done. I want to make the point that basically you got back to zero. Okay, we, the HUD report talked about deficiencies. If you check all of those boxes, we're at zero. We need to be way above zero if we're ever going to deliver to residents. And if we're going to deliver to residents, they have to be partners. And if the board and the director can't get that through your head, that you have to empower the residents through the resident councils to be partners, it won't happen. Getting to zero is nothing to applaud, although I appreciate the hard work, but we're at zero. So that, that's going to be my comment. I will hope that I heard earlier, the director dismissed the Section 3, I mean, yeah, Section 3 comment that the chair made, is, oh, well, that's not important. He can't help cut the grass. That's ridiculous. That's the perfect opportunity for residents to be empowered through this process.
Can we just go on the record and correct that?
Thank you, Mr. Rec.
And correct that.
Next on the list is.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We just need to go on the record to correct that statement. That wasn't what Director Donald said. I just don't think that that's fair, right? It just needs to be stated. Facts are facts. That's all.
Agreed.
It's okay.
Thanks, Commissioner.
But she didn't brush off Section 3. She didn't say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brianna Dawkins. Brianna Dawkins, are you on the line? And if you're on this dial and need to unmute a star six?
Hello?
Yes, is this Brianna Dawkins?
No, it is not. My name is Donna Towns. And earlier you called my name, but other residents chimed in and then I was ignored. So.
Okay, Mr. Towns, I have a little too, three minutes. Please proceed.
Hello, how y'all doing?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to say my name is Donna Towns again. And I'm very disappointed in the way I've been treated as a DC Park Morton resident since 2009. And I'm gonna say that to say in 2018, well, let me get back to this, in 2017. And then we go even further, but I've been in the court system with DCHA Park Morton for a long time. And then in March 2016, I've been to court and then there's a press appeal for me to pay a certain amount. I had that amount paid by ELO. But then Ms. Barnes went on sick leave and I tried to submit my daughter's lease to the interim managers and all of that. And no interim managers accepted it. But when Ms. Barnes returned, she accepted it and she removed my daughter from the lease. But at the same time, Ms. Barnes was supposed to backdate from May 2017 to 2018. That didn't happen. So now I'm going to move forward to 2018. 2018, Ms. Diallo became Park Morton manager in August 2018 to, between September 2018. My, what I know is when a person, when a manager switches from property, they are supposed to recognize all the disorders in which a person's accounts are in. And that didn't happen. So the rent was not backdated. So then, I'm moving to 2019. I was unlawfully evicted based on conversion claim from 20, for apartment 21, based on no repairs done to my apartment, nothing. So and on May 30th, 20, May 30th, 2019, I signed a lease to move to upstairs in 2019. I mean, to apartment 33 on May 31st, 2019. On May 31st, 2019, I was unlawfully evicted. Ms. Diallo took, it was a conversion claim. And she took self-help help with calling the police, telling them I was going to commit suicide. So they asked me to remove myself from the property. I removed myself from the property. And then at the time when I removed myself from the property, all of my property, my apartment 2021 possession was disposed of into a DCHA dump truck. Or you can look at, all you gotta do is look at the videotape from the Park Morton surveillance cameras from the courtyard. Okay, I'm mentally distraught about that. Really, I lost everything, all of my mother's property. I tried to address it to them. They don't want to take into account what I've gone through. And then again, they don't want to take account into the manager, the housing manager's responsibilities and duties is to skip over collection of current and delinquent rent. She didn't even do that. When that rent was not delinquent, was not backdated.
Thank you, Ms. Towns. The time, time is up.
Thank you. Next is Craig London. Mr. London?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mr. London.
Thank you, sir. This is Craig London from the DC Housing Providers Association. For starters, I'd like to thank whoever put the contact information for the board members and the detail of the board committees on the website. That's a nice improvement since the last meeting. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge Executive Director Donald and Hamray and Jenna and whoever else have been making process improvements. We have noticed a few days have been shaved off the process of processing new lease-ups that have been uploaded to the portal. So that does help to reduce a lot of stress with landlords and tenants. I would like to make a slight correction. The rent increase freeze has been closer to five years rather than three years. It's been since two thousand eighteen. One suggestion I have Chairman Skinner for you and for the other engaged members of your board is to consider establishing a new board committee for public engagement. I think that there was a major attack against Director Donald from the Washington Post that we're all aware of. It's, a lot of it was factually incorrect and very biased and unfair. I think it would have been nice if the board had a stronger presence in helping to put out public statements to help some, correct some factual matters. A lot of the landlords are scared to oppose that kind of thing because of fear of retaliation from the media. So i- if the, uh, the board could engage with the city council, engage with media, and also just in general public outreach, I think that would provide a nice buffer for whoever the executive director is. The next comment I'd like to make is regarding the move to work plan. Part of the plan seems to indicate that the rents are going to be kind of held secret until the time that the lease-up package is submitted. So that there will not be disclosed prior to that. There'll be no way to do any kind of price discovery on what the rent will be for a unit. This has the opportunity to strongly discriminate against voucher tenants when competing against a market rate tenant. If two different tenants, a market rate and voucher are competing for the same unit, a landlord is always going to choose the one where he knows he's guaranteed that he can get the rent that he's advertised. He doesn't want to wait three to six weeks and then find out that, oh, well, DCHA is only going to pay seventeen hundred dollars, not two thousand dollars. So this is a serious concern. And I would encourage Executive Director Donald to re-establish some small working groups to help beta test and stress test and run a bunch of scenarios against this new rent pricing system before it goes live. The DCHPA has established a long list of scenarios. We're interested in working with your team to run the scenarios by to make sure that it's all accommodated properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. London. Yeah, we, we will continue to work with you and your, and your members as we move this process forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Jocelyn Ishmael. Jocelyn Ishmael. Tawanda Holly, or Holly? Okay, I'll move on. Karen Hilton. Karen Hilton. And if you're dialed in, star six to unmute. Uh, next is Kendra Beeman. Earlier.
Kendra Beeman? Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm sorry if I appeared to be rude earlier. I couldn't, I didn't know that I was going to have to go after everybody that spoke. I was going to hit for two thousand forty-five minutes. Um, how, I want to start off by saying, I just recently worked with the Department of Housing, the voucher program, with someone who was quartered from Florida and Mrs. McColl, the lady McColl, was outstanding in getting that done. I would like to give her kudos. And also Mr. Baxter, who provided me a response, a quick response and a quick turnaround for an inspection. And the tenant is now in his unit. The issue that I had, that I had experienced was there was no one answering the phones at DCHA. And after waiting for forty-five minutes to an hour, you are advised that you would have to email the particular person. Uh, one thing that I did also learned in helping this gentleman secure housing, landlords can charge, if they come in, they can charge, a regular person will be seventeen hundred dollars. And once they found out that he had a voucher, it was twenty-six hundred dollars. That's like a lot of money that, um, that DC is putting out to secure units for, um, clients who need housing. Um, I've, I've been on the listening sessions since you all started and I see that people are saying their concerns and issues and you all are saying, okay, we're going to get back with you. We're going to have someone get back with you. I would suggest that maybe you all have people on standby. So when these people do call in, that you can have someone direct, directly help them at that juncture. There needs to be some kind of accountability, even with the ombudsman that you all have in place. Emails do go unanswered. Like the other gentleman I was second, there's a lot of things that's in black and white and no action. Far as the communities and you were saying about bringing in vendors to help with the communities, why not consider some of the youth and the residents that's there and pay them to beautify their community because a lot of them do have skills. The complaints about the inspection turnarounds, I was blessed to have a quick one. However, those were the, the comments that people were speaking of. There was not really a lot of quick turnaround. And so as I was speaking as far as the community is concerned, there is overpricing in the properties, which makes it hard for those who have subsidy to afford based on the certain locations where landlords can get up to six thousand dollars. A lot of the locations that you all have, such as Lincoln Heights, which is on the Garden, Columbus Heights, twenty-first, they are really highly crime ridden. So, um, being extensive in your search for security would be something that should be on the forefront. DC residents who have been on the list for years for vouchers, I'm going to be honest with you, I've been on this in nineteen ninety-nine. My kids are now thirty-four and thirty-one years old. I've never been called. But they, they are having a lot of...
Thank you, Ms. Beeman. Can you wrap, can you wrap up, please?
I'm, I'm going to wrap up right now. What I was going to say was there are a lot of people who are waiting for vouchers who have rapid rehousing vouchers and they are being, they're complaining because they're seeing people who are migrating to the city and they are getting their vouchers first. So again, I would close with accountability and getting back with people with answers and not just brushing them off. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Beeman.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Daniel Del Palago.
I apologize, I'm on a moving bus, but I'll try to be brief. I've got a couple of things. One is I received a call from a Greenleaf residence, the family side, who said her unit had been inspected. The people told her, they came to do inspections. It happened on a Friday, if I'm not mistaken. The people said we'll be back on Monday to address the issues. She waited and no one came. As I understand, what I had understood is that you all were doing inspections and then setting up, you know, the teams to come out and do the actual fixes. So there seems to be some miscommunication where maybe the team is seeing horrible condition and wants to provide some sort of support, but not giving realistic expectations to residents whose units are being inspected. So I wanted to flag that for you all. The other piece I wanted to flag is, I think, just following up on what Commissioner Dickerson brought up a little earlier. I know Rachel Joseph had mentioned at least that the one that occurred at Sibley Plaza, if I'm not mistaken, that there would be follow-up meetings. My understanding is that those are not written, follow-up meetings are not written into the legislation that caused these initial listening sessions. But I think that's a great idea. I would implore you all to actually, actualize those. Let's get those scheduled. And, you know, whatever months are appropriate, but follow up to what happened to the many questions. I understand that you guys are following up with individuals, but I think for the community at large to know what sort of follow-up, what improvements have been made since that point in time where questions and concerns were added. Lastly, I'll close to say that I realize that these meetings are tough and they're quick and they're fast. But I don't think this, you know, having the residents up front and just giving them three minutes is really doing anything to fix the adversarial nature that exists, that still exists here. So encouraging you to rethink another way where voices, where residents feel like their voices are really heard. Thank you, and I'll close with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Lee Simon. Mr. Simon?
Hello. I have a, just a quick comment on the new rent list tool. And the initiative eight as proposed in the move to work plan. DCHA has announced it's switching from tax assessment submarket rents to a third-party tool to establish rents unit by unit. I just want to say that switching the way rent is determined for plus or minus eighteen thousand apartments is a significant change and that there must be transparency for landlords and for tenants. The new tool must be made publicly available to both landlords and tenants. Facing such a large change on a secretive database of rents not available to the public will only serve to disrupt markets. For example, how is a tenant supposed to compete for a unit when they don't know how much money they have to spend? If a unit is advertised for twenty-five hundred dollars, how would a tenant paying with a voucher know if they can afford the unit? They would have to wait weeks, fill out pages of paperwork, have an inspection, have the inspector provide the unit characteristics to a housing specialist. The housing specialist will then enter it into a database just to find out the tenant wasted six weeks of time before learning DCHA will only pay two thousand for the unit. On the flip side, why would a landlord fill out pages of forms and wait weeks for a rent determination when a market rate tenant can make the same determination for themselves on the spot? The database must be made publicly available so both tenants and landlords can input apartment characteristics and have some idea of what rent determination will be ahead of time. DCHA has let us know there'll be more outreach on how these changes are to be implemented, which is obviously terrific. But however they are implemented, it is crucial for the stability of the market that the changes be done transparently and that the tool be made publicly available before, before procurement of the tool and also before implementing the tool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Appreciate your comments.
Next is Mr. Paul Rowe. Mr. Paul Rowe?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Paul Rowe and I am a Housing Choice Voucher landlord. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah. I'm a Housing Choice Voucher landlord. I am not a project-based voucher landlord who owns hundreds of units. In fact, I rented out a two-bedroom, two-bath condo unit in Brookland. My tenant is an elderly voucher holder and her son, two of the last remaining former Park Morton residents who moved into my unit in November of two thousand twenty-one. They're terrific tenants. In fact, I hope they remain tenants. That said, on May third, I sent them a notice of a planned rent increase well in advance of the effective date of November first, which is the second anniversary of their lease. For the record, their rent has remained unchanged in two years. I CC'd that notice to six DCHA voucher staff members, several of whom I've spoken to as early as last year to learn when DCHA will authorize an increase to its fair market rents. As you're aware, DCHA has not publicly increased its fair market rents since two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. In that four-year period, the rental market has changed dramatically. Rents have reportedly increased in the district nineteen percent. In the last two years, upward pressure on market rents and rental costs have increased significantly due to market demand and cost inflation. In that time period, and in comparison, the DC Rental Housing Commission has increased its rent caps on rent-controlled buildings over thirteen percent. When I contacted and asked voucher program staff, when is DCHA going to increase its fair market rents? No one knew the answer to that question. The answer to that question will determine in large part whether voucher tenants remain sheltered in place or otherwise have to move unnecessarily because voucher rents insufficiently address competing market rents and housing costs. For small landlords as myself, we found it difficult in the current environment to support affordable housing efforts. I certainly hope within the next six months, which is the time of the advanced notice I've given to my tenants, hope it's sufficient time for the board to take appropriate action to increase the fair market rents and better subsidize housing costs for voucher holders. So in conclusion, and for the record, I ask the Commissioners the same question. When is DCHA going to increase its fair market rents? With that, I'll, I'll listen to the response.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Right, that, that, as I, hi, it's Brenda Donald, Executive Director. Those who, any rent increases will be considered as part of the new process to determine reasonableness. And we will be communicating with landlords what that process is. And to, um, to Mr. Simon and to Mr. London, of course, we will be engaging landlords over the next few weeks to talk about the process and to get some feedback. And you all have given us a couple of things to think about today, which we will take into consideration.
Thank you. Next is Lawan Jones. Lawan Jones. And lastly, Anita Shelton. Shelton? Mr. Chair, that concludes our list.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question? I, I think one of the things that we all feel challenged by, I'll just speak for myself, I feel challenged by is sort of people bringing their individual concerns to this. And I certainly, I welcome hearing them. I'm not suggesting I don't want to hear them. But I, I know that we as a commission aren't necessarily the best positioned people to address them. And I, I just wonder, I, I know you already have a screening process. It might even be helpful for people broader than just the commission to understand. But is there a way to try to, maybe you already do this, but to say to people, do you really need to testify to the board because they really aren't in the best position to help you? But if you talk to Rachel or Jenna or somebody else on the team, they can't. So you, we do that and...
And everyone gets called.
Yeah.
Because obviously we want to try to address people's problems at the staff level.
Yeah.
And immediately. And we encourage people not to necessarily come to the board and wait for a whole month.
And I think it's just helpful for people to say that like three minutes isn't enough. The reason we have to do three minutes is because we have so many people calling in. Again, I'm not suggesting I don't want to hear this. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying I don't know that this group is best positioned to provide the help that you guys are.
Forum.
Yeah.
Forum for public commentary. There are multiple forums that we provide for resident engagement. And at the staff level, multiple staff on the properties all the time. We meet with residents. We meet through our resident leadership. We, the, the listening sessions was just another forum. So I think maybe if we capture all of that for you, we have an Office of Resident Engagement. I think...
It's good for us to know that you're trying to divert the, to people who can really help.
Can help.
Absolutely.
Full-time.
And Commissioner Silla, I mean, I do, I do want to make sure, um, at, at least that we were, that I personally like respond to everybody's call to have more than three minutes. As Chair Skinner already indicated earlier, this is, this is volunteer, in some cases voluntold, right? And, and, and that, you know, like as someone who has full-time responsibilities for the inner agency council on homelessness, it is, it, like, I, I do not know where to find the time to do the regular job, not just this one. And so, you know, it's not, it's not meant to be disrespectful when we say we are limiting the time that is available for people's comments, but because we cannot spend, you know, two and a half, three hours at a board meeting, we do have to turn and be, and try to be responsive to our emails, to our phone calls, to other constituents who also need our time and attention. So I, I just wanted to like, to like respond directly to, to everybody else and, and indicate that lots of us have responsibilities that are larger than just the function that we play here. And, and we need to balance all of these different responsibilities in a way that's fair and transparent. So I, I personally support three minutes. And in fact, I think we need to, we need, we need to cut it down to two minutes, honestly.
Thank you, Commissioner Silla. Is there any other business to come before the board today? So, so I've been told that today is Commissioner Harris's birthday, so we want to wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next board meeting, the next board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday. will be held on Wednesday, June the 14th, 2023 at 1:00 PM via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting can be, in the meeting live can be found at DCHousing.org. And the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a point. I want to congratulate and give praise to our Director for all that she's done and weathered and the ups and the downs. This is a tough environment to be in. And you've tried mightily and you've made gains. You should feel proud of yourself and what you've done in this short time. And it's not been easy. Nothing is easy in this world. I've been in this for 50 years, so I know. And, uh, I want to also say how, how much I enjoy the board. I, uh, we were pulled together from different sources. And, uh, who knows whether we could really blend and work together, have the same goals ultimately, even though we come from very different backgrounds. And that then we could see that we have a mission to accomplish for the people, for the residents in the city. And I just have, I just want to give thanks for this board and what we've been able to do so far and the way we've been able to work together so far. I just think that's very, very important, even though we're different, we disagree, et cetera. But we've got the same mission and the same focus. So I really am very thankful for that. And I want to give thanks again for Director Donald. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Dickerson. So, uh, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Uh, it is adjourned at 51.